All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission of Thursday, June 19th, 2025. If we can start with roll call, please.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Moran. Commissioner Yu. Chair, we have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. First up, I'll look for an approval of the agenda with the changing to excluding the meeting minutes of May 15th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, including the exclusion of the May 15th meeting minute approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes of June 15th, 2025. Does anybody have any edits to present, changes they'd like to see? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
I have to abstain from the May 15th. You said the May 15th or the June 5th?
I meant to say the June 5th. So I will look for a motion to approve the June 5th minutes as presented.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We heard from Councilmember Goss that he will not be able to join us tonight, and seeing no backups, we'll move on to community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing no input, we will move on to public hearing. Municipal Code Text Amendment, MCTA 25-01, noise ordinance update. Does the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, our Assistant Planner, Huang, will present a presentation for the Commission.
Thank you, Director Lynn. Good evening, Chair Dennison and Planning Commissioners. Tonight, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the updates to the noise ordinance under Municipal Code Text Amendment 25-01. As for some general background, and as a refresher, the noise ordinance seeks to protect the residents of Sierra Madre from excessive unnecessary and unreasonable noises from all sources in the community. The current gaps in the existing noise ordinance would include no standards for enforcing or measuring noise levels, and no baseline specifying ambient noise levels. In a previous Planning Commission meeting on April 17th, our consultants, Rincon consultants, provided a presentation and also presented the amendments to the ordinance.
Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Yu has joined us.
Thank you.
Following Rincon's presentation, the Planning Commission then discussed and directed staff to consider the following revisions to the proposed amendments, one being specifying the exterior noise standards table. This was to simplify it to just day and evening times, and also the conversion from DBA frequencies to DBC. To harmonize use hours, this was with the construction use hours and the equipment powered equipment, to harmonize them with other sections of the municipal code. Reduce required noise level measurement duration. This was reduced down to 10 minutes, and quantify or eliminate vibration, in which in the next meeting, we eliminated it. On May 15th, the Planning Commission then held a public hearing, and then also directed staff to consider additional revisions to the proposed amendments, them being remove references to commercial zones and ambient noise from the exterior noise standards. Clarify the exemption section for special events and equipment use hours, and also to include enforcement methods. So following that meeting, staff had met with the Chief of Police and City Attorney to discuss what is needed for enforcement, and found that the police department currently does not have a sound level meter, and our code enforcement officer has one sound level meter, but it only measures for DBA frequencies. With Rincon's recommendation, the police department will need an ANSI Type 2 sound level meter. This would read both DBA and DBC, and is typically used for general enforcement and noise surveys, along with a tripod and windshield for ease of use and accurate measurements. The police department will also conduct one 10-minute reading or sound level reading at the impacted property, and would also need to purchase a minimum of two meters. Previously, Rincon noted that DBA and DBC would need to be measured separately, but he did, they did provide an update where specific meters can provide both at the same time, and it would be the, or he mentioned the Pacolo 2 meter, which is one that Rincon uses in-house, and it's an ANSI Type 2 sound level meter as well. So the proposed amendments would include the following sections to be updated. Those that are marked in red were updated and revised from the previous Planning Commission meeting. Those would be for definitions, exterior noise standards, and exemptions. There is a QR code on the screen available to scan by anybody in the audience or at home, if you'd like to follow along with the draft amendments. Starting with definitions, the term "special city-sponsored or city-affiliated events" were defined, or were defined as a temporary event that is organized, co-organized, or directly supported by the city on public or private property. This would include events such as our Fourth of July festivities, concerts in the park, community yard sales, and general special events would be temporary events that are not organized by the city, but held on city-owned or controlled property. Those aren't city-affiliated, as defined in this chapter, could also be referenced in Chapter 12.32 for special events permits. But examples of these would be block parties or the Halloween events on Allegria Avenue. For exterior noise standards, the ambient noise level was removed and also reference or references to commercial zones were also removed to allow standards to apply to all land use types. For, under exemptions, Section D was revised to align the powered equipment hours with our city construction hours of 10:00 AM to 10, or 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays, and also included holiday hours. In Section E, that was updated to define the special city-sponsored or city-affiliated events, which, which referenced to the previous slide for definitions. So with those following changes, staff recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the consideration of the Municipal Code Text Amendments to the noise ordinance, consider all testimony, and approve the Municipal Code Text Amendments in Chapter 9.32 for noise, and recommend City Council amend Chapter 8.40 for landscaping equipment pursuant to the Planning Commission Resolution 25-07, recommending City Council approve the subject Municipal Code Text Amendment by ordinance. With the alternatives, the Planning Commission may also approve as recommended and stated, or approve with modifications, or continue the public hearing, providing staff with direction. That concludes my presentation. If the Commission has any questions, I'd be gladly to answer them, and we do have our Chief of Police present as well in this meeting. Thank you.
Great. I did have a question on that very last part about Text Amendment 8.40, because I don't, I didn't see or I missed in the packet what the text amendment would be. So what, can you help me understand what it is that you're recommending we do there?
Yes, so in Chapter 8.40 for landscaping equipment, the hours of operation would be, or hours for powered equipment would be changed to align with the hours that we are recommending for the noise ordinance.
So that there would be alignment across the codes for all the times?
To change it to align with the construction use hours, and also to include holiday use hours.
Great, great, thank you. Questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay. I did have a question for the chief, if that's okay. And I didn't mean to retread any territory that we'd already hit on, but in Section 9.32.050, there's parts of the code that have to do with operating a motor vehicle without a muffler. It felt like vehicle code infraction to me, rather than noise infraction. I just, I didn't know if you had an opinion about us leaving that to the vehicle code enforcement, rather than noise?
Thank you for the question. That's a vehicle code violation. Absolutely, it should be with the vehicle code.
Okay. Okay. Because I guess I was trying to figure out how we would even enforce that from the city perspective. You kind of have to visually see that there's not a muffler on there. You can hear it, but we don't have, the city won't have the power to stop and inspect vehicles for that, right? That's all stuff that would have, the practical enforcement would have to come from your department.
That is correct. The practical enforcement would come from a traffic stop, and then any modified exhaust or removal of the catalytic converter would be a violation, a vehicle code violation.
And you would be the person who got called for sound anyway, if there was a sound complaint? So you'd be able to determine that the source of the sound was the lack of a muffler, and enforce the vehicle code at that time?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. All right. That was my only question for the chief. Any other questions? Do we think, do we think we're going to need the chief at all during this, or? All right. I think that's all we needed, chief. Thank you. I do have another question for staff. I lied, sorry. In 932-060, which I will find at the same time you are. Under Section D, I don't remember us getting clarity at our last meeting about what the city manager would give a three-month temporary permit for. 932-060 is, that's the new number, sorry, that's the marked-up number of exception permits. And the last one, D, is the city manager's authority and decision to give a temporary permit to exceed it. It was the up-to-three-months part that I was trying to understand, what would be an event in the city outside of an emergency that, which is already a covered exemption?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. What I can think of is either for public works, for constructions, or is it for, it could be for filming permits, if they have extensive filming.
So, two questions then from that. One, city, the public works doesn't have to get a permit when they do construction within the city, and so that's why he would, the city manager would need this ability to allow for that, because that's not previously granted by getting a construction permit. Okay. I think I understand that one. As for filming, we already have a set of codes and requirements around hours of noise for filming, so this is like a pocket approval that the city manager can, can give to a filming company to get around the hours that we already have established as a code?
I believe so, because some of the filming require nighttime filming. I don't know if you remember, there was a time that it requires beyond that 10 o'clock. So that could be the carve-out for that activity.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No?
I don't think, I don't really have questions, but I guess they're, they are questions. In the new definitions, we define three things I'm not sure we need to define anymore. Commercial property, industrial property, and residential property. I couldn't find them, that term, anywhere in the code anymore. It was there, I think. So I think it, because it got added, because we added those terms, but then we got rid of them. So I don't think we really need to overdefine.
So if I might recommend?
Yeah.
Let's take that up in deliberation?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that sounds good.
That's okay?
Yeah.
But if you have questions?
No, that's not really a question. It's, I guess it's more deliberation.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this particular item that has been agendized. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than 25 minutes, to ensure an orderly and timely meeting. You bet, you bet. All right, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Who'd like to start? Maybe we could just overall thoughts first, and then flip pages to see if there's any specific changes anybody has. Does that work?
Yeah.
You want to start?
I was, I read the, I read the minutes from the last, or two meetings ago that I missed, just, and so I appreciate the work that was done there. I think, I think we've landed in a pretty good spot because of the harmonization across hours, and removing the definitions, and removing commercial and industrial, and basically having a one-size-fits-all, which I think for Sierra Madre actually works quite well. Even though we have commercial zones and things like that, we're, they're so closely knit together with our residential, and they don't produce a lot of noise, typically to my knowledge. So I think that harmonization across, across the land uses, as well as the hours for equipment and construction, I think, I think that's a really good outcome. And generally, just simplifying things as well, I think, in terms of, you know, using the good work that was done by Rincon, but then, then thinking about that further and simplifying. I know we're not responsible for budgetary issues. I was a little concerned about police department enforcement, but based on the notes and the staff report, and your follow-up meeting with the police department, it seems like there's a good resolution there that doesn't seem too burdensome for the departments. Also, I think that's a great outcome. So I'm, I'm in favor of the current, the current product.
Thank you.
I think we've done a lot of work already leading up to this, so I think we're almost there. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think everything, I mean, I agree with the majority of everything. It's just some like wording-type things that I, I think could be fixed, or, you know.
So I would really like to thank staff for all their hard work on this, this one, integrating Rincon's work, all of our various, both sides of the, of the table opinions that we've had throughout this, and really helping distill the comments that we've given you, so thank you very much for that. I would like to exit tonight, if at all possible, with an approved one, and get a first reading of it. So if we can make a couple of these edits live, I think remembering every time we look at a code, we're going to see something that we want to change on it, but let's, let's really knock off the big parts tonight, and if, if we can come to it, then get it passed. That would be my, my ask. So with that, I guess we can start flipping pages. Sounded like you had the first one.
Yeah, I've got another small one in the definitions. It's literally just a space is missing.
So then, do you just want to make, make your recommendations?
Yeah, in construction, second line, after, after the word "prepare," the site is one word. There we go.
I also see a missing period in the line above for "after made."
Oh, nice.
And you recommended striking the definition for commercial property?
I couldn't find, commercial property, again, you know, just on a word search, I couldn't find that term, so.
I'm, I'm open to that. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay.
It was.
And you said in.
Industrial property.
Yeah.
Then again, residential property.
We'll give staff a minute to double-check. You let us know when you're comfortable, Director Lynn.
Yeah, I think we're good with that.
Okay. And, and if there's a, if for some reason either of those definitions tie into 840, then I would recommend just, I don't know, can we just check that real quick? If, if all we did was affect the hours, hopefully the hours are not set by zone.
Oh, right.
So I, Section 9.32.030, I see commercial property listed in the, in the exterior noise standards, but is that in the current form, in the current version? 9.3, 9.32.030, I see commercial property.
I think.
Is that struck?
It's struck, though, isn't it?
That's struck now, all right? Or no, am I?
I did find them in there, but all the ones I found were struck, so.
This one looks like an addition. It's at the, it's at the bottom of this paragraph.
Yeah, I don't, I think that that one was a description of potential uses, rather than a defined use?
Oh, I, yeah, okay.
Oh, I have a thing for that line, too.
Okay.
I see, I see, yeah, mm-hmm. Just wanted to point it out.
Because, because hotel, motel. I thought we.
I was gonna, I was.
I thought we struck most of that.
I was gonna say, because that, I mean, that, that is, that is just, we've named every property, so I don't know why we need to name every property. We could just say property. Right? I mean, we get rid of residential, hotel, motel, public, because it's, it's everything. So if the property line of any property, either within or outside of the city.
That would resolve the issue. I think that's a good solution.
Yeah, because it would just be measured at the property line.
Yeah.
Right. We don't even have half of those things, but it's nice for the future.
Yeah, that.
No, not, not line, oh.
Right, you got it. That was right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Before we, oh, before we end with the definitions, I have one more.
Okay. I think we're stretching as we double-check 840.
Chair, so Chapter 8.40 does not have any reference to commercial properties or industrial properties?
Thanks for double-checking that. I knew that would come back if we didn't check it here. Okay, so can we go back up to definitions?
Yeah, right there. The only other one, I, it was the same thing, I couldn't find it in, in the current version, is vibration-sensitive land use.
Oh, right. So everybody okay with deleting that section? Yeah. Is Wisteria a special city-sponsored or city-affiliated event, or a special event?
I think it's a city-affiliated event, is run by Chamber of Commerce, but the city does provide public safety and public work staff to support that.
We do have a couple of those hybrid events that, that Wisteria's, yeah, okay. All right, did anybody have any other, you, did you have more changes, you said? No?
Not, not there.
Okay. Where's next?
No, no, that was it, sorry.
All right, so then, I guess the one, that one section, that 932.050, motor-driven vehicles. I think the last two sentences probably can be struck. Unless city, unless staff had a reason that we should include that in there. I mean, I think that if, my understanding is that if somebody called in a complaint, they'd call it to PD, and then PD could enforce that. I don't think that they would need to rely on the, the noise violation.
I think, yeah.
Am I thinking about that right? Okay.
So is the suggestion to strike the last two sentences, where the paragraph is essentially giving a view of awfulness?
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
So.
That, that's what I'm proposing.
The sentence starting "it shall be," yeah.
The part she has highlighted is what I'm recommending.
Yeah, I agree, because the horn and.
I want to keep the horn in there, because I think that, yeah.
Yep.
All right.
City Attorney, is it necessary to reference the vehicle code?
If it was going to be duplicative of the violation that would be under the vehicle code, we could cross-reference that, but was my understanding that it's a separate?
Yeah.
So I don't think it's necessary?
Okay. Great, thank you. I, I don't have any other changes to propose, does anybody else? And we can recommend it, or do it, we don't do a first reading, right? It has to go to City Council to be amended, and then do a first reading?
That's correct. The first reading is with City Council.
So we're just passing it with our recommended edits? Okay, so then I will look for a motion to approve Municipal Code Text Amendment, MCTA 25-01, the noise ordinance update, with. with planning commission's recommended edits.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal code text amendment, MCTA two-five-zero-one, noise ordinance update with the planning commission recommended changes.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have a discussion. Consideration of covenants, conditions and restrictions for parcel map eight-three-eight-nine-seven, one eighty-two West Highland Avenue. Does city staff have a presentation?
Chair, I don't have a presentation. It's just a brief report that I am presenting the staff's recommendation to approve the covenant conditions and restrictions, or the CCNR, for the Highland Gardens condominium located at one eighty-two West Highland. So the tentative tract map and the conditional use permit was previous, previously approved by the planning commission, subsequently approved by the city council back in May twenty-twenty-three. The city council approved the map, the tentative tract map, map eight-three-eight-nine-seven, and the conditional use permit. Pursuant to municipal code sixteen point four zero point zero six eight, CCNR must be submitted to the planning commission and the city council for approval prior to the approval of final parcel map. And the CCNR governs the homeowner's responsibility and their common use areas. Also, this for special assessments, maintenance obligations, architectural reviews, and HOA operations and leasing rules. So the CCNR has been reviewed by staff and also by our city attorney's office. Minor clarification and recommendation were incorporated into the CCNR that's attached to the staff report. And we also confirm that the CCNR is consistent in conformance with the project's conditions. The CCNR is not a project under CEQA guideline. So this is a procedural action after the tentative tract map. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the CCNR associated with the three-unit condominium project and adopt the resolution twenty-five oh eight as outlined in the packet. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, questions for staff? Sorry, I have some questions. I don't think we've done one of these in a long, long time. And so I didn't remember to what extent this gets reviewed by city attorney and all of that. So I'm, thank you for helping us understand that that has been reviewed. I did have some questions about it. I'm looking at it from the lens. I know people who live in a certain development that's close to here and close to the freeway. And heard some horror stories about not being able to form boards as part of an HOA and therefore not being able to actually take action and get stuff done. And so I just wanted to understand what happens in some default, potential default or breach situations, so that we can understand. My concern always being if people have to abandon the location or it turns into a big litigation and the property starts getting run down because of the time it takes to get through that, that's tough on the city, right? So I just had some questions, if that's okay, for the city attorney? The common area, the way it was defined, it sounded like it was everything that was within a building. But it specifically says that the units are the responsibility of the owner. And so what part of the common area, because I, these three units are detached from each other. And I don't think that there's, I don't recall seeing on my morning walks when I went by, any common built equipment. So does it, is there really almost no common area in this particular situation?
As far as I know, no. However, I should disclose that Alex is the one who's thoroughly looked at this.
Okay.
I've only reviewed what he reviewed. So the way you're explaining it, that does make sense to me that there wouldn't be a common area, but I haven't personally investigated that.
Okay.
Chair, if I can, I may add. So the project is three detached unit with their fenced-in private landscape area and also the front yard and the driveway and a little bit of the back turnaround area. So those would, and the mailboxes, so those would be considered the common area that HOA will need to maintain.
Okay, but there's no, it has this definition of internal girders, everything to the rough finish of the wall, et cetera, et cetera. That doesn't apply in a situation like this because there's nothing that's built on the common area. Yeah, I didn't phrase that correctly. I'm sorry, I misled you a little on that one. Yes, I understood that the driveway would be common area and probably some other areas. And once this passes, will the develop, I assume the developer owns the property. And so the, or the LLC, whatever, whatever entity owns it. The way that it's written to be a member, you have to own one of the units. And so as they own all three, they will be the sole member in the beginning until somebody comes along and buys one? Am I thinking about that right?
I think yes. I think until each parcel has been purchased, they would be the sole owner, but that's with the intention that it gets subdivided.
Right, right. So because until it gets sold to somebody else, they technically own all three, right? When they sell the first one, then they'll own two. There'll be two votes. And so that's where I was headed with this, is the voting would be that the developer would have two of the three needed votes until such time as a second owner was found.
Correct.
Okay. The agreement refers to a bunch of votes that can be passed by the board of directors. So presumably, the board has to get appointed and updated as new members join?
Correct.
Okay, so in the beginning, again, it'll be primarily the developer being the board until a second owner comes in.
Correct, or just a non-existent board. I don't know that it would be one person.
Okay, and it referred quite a few times to the the policies of the board. So I assume that that is something that was outside of the purview of what was reviewed? In other words, the rules and regulations of the HOA, that's all excluded from the CCRs?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And there were, there was a lot of handling of assessments and taxation. Is it generally assumed that the HOA, or is the, will the common area be part of the taxed parcel, or will each of the individual, like how does the taxation work, common area versus unit?
That I don't know.
Okay. Are these generally, I, do you remember the last time we did one of these, Director Lynn?
So the last condominium that the planning commission approved was the one on Mariposa. I believe it's, yeah, twenty thirteen, Mariposa, that seven-unit condominium next to the library.
So it's safe to say that these are generally just approved and moved on and not much? If the city attorney staff has reviewed it, that that's good enough for us?
Correct, unless planning commission have special conditions or special rules that you want to be included in the CCNR, and you can do that right now.
In the agreement in section seven dot two-three, seven dot two dot three, sorry. It has quiet times listed that are set by the CCRs rather than by city code. Is that something that can cause confusion in CCRs when the time is not set by code?
Because it doesn't seem to contradict anything, I think they're allowed to have their own hours requirement, but I understand your point.
I mean, they could say that they can go, they can be allowed till eleven. By code, they can only be allowed till ten once the new code passes, right? So.
But this does say quiet hours start at ten PM, so that's, I guess, why I wasn't.
Right, but codes change over time, and so I guess I would just, I didn't want there to become, but, like, that doesn't apply today. It will hopefully if the council approves what we put forth, right? But, or it does on certain days, but I don't know if we wanted to, it's CCRs. I guess it's not too germane.
I think the code would still.
Well, the code will always prevail. I didn't want there to be confusion if you, you know, looked at the CCRs and then moved into the unit thinking you could do something different than the times that the code allows.
I think the hope is that the code doesn't change that frequently that it's an issue.
That is the hope. That is the hope.
Yeah, we did provide the code reference for the attorney and then either they can reference or put the hours in here, and then I think the decision is for them to put it here, so it's easier for homeowners to reference to.
Okay. I don't know that I have any other questions. Any questions for staff? All right, hearing none. At this time, anybody may address the planning commission concerning this particular agendized item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing none, we'll bring it back for deliberation. Any deliberation?
None from me.
Then I will look for a motion to approve the covenants, conditions and restrictions for parcel map eight-three-eight-nine-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the covenants, conditions and restrictions for parcel map eight-three-eight-nine-seven as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, planning commission reports. Any planning commission reports? All right, planning and community preservation department reports.
Chair Dennison, so for the next city council meeting, we are taking the discretionary demolition permit to city council. City council asked for a information regarding all the potential historic resources that's seventy-five years and older in our city and how are they impacted by the fire? Even though they are not destroyed or damaged by the fire, but a lot of residents came in and expressed that they're concerned regarding replacing windows and vents and council is concerned that is an extra burden for the residents if they want to do some home hardening. So that discussion is this coming Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you. Along those same lines, I would recommend that we get in front of the city council a request for guidance on historical conversions of historical houses to condominiums so that we can understand, I think that a lot of people have an idea in their head that a condominium is multiple units joined together sharing walls. And so the conversion, in order to get those air rights and sell each lot individually, I don't know, is something that was necessarily contemplated as the codes were written twenty-five years ago, twenty-six years ago. And so it'd be great to get some guidance from city council on what they would like us to see to update, if anything, those codes.
Chair, I'll follow up with our city manager.
Thank you. Any other reports?
That concludes my report.
All right. Looks like we're going to have our next meeting? On July third?
The next meeting is July third, and I don't have any upcoming projects. I do have a consent item that was two minor modifications. One is to the development agreement for the Meadows project and also a minor modification for the fence and wall plan. Those two are staff level review, but suggested by our city attorney that we should bring it to the planning commission and also city council as a consent item. So you're aware of it before you review the design review permit.
Is that timely enough that it has to be done on July third?
No.
All right. Are we allowed to recommend not having that meeting? I expect that we won't be able to get a quorum that night.
Certainly. Okay.
Any other items? All right, then I will look at the calendar quickly so that I get this right. Adjourn to our likely next regularly scheduled meeting of July seventeenth. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.